Hey, is that... Do you really want to go in there? What's his name? Arizona State.
Do you mind if I come look over here?
Yeah.
I don't mind.
Yes.
You want to stay in the first one?
I'm sorry, I can work out if you want.
Uh, uh, I'm over in.
Jen, were you able to set it up with technology? Okay, thank you. Um, who is it? Oh, just to talk to him? Yeah. Of course.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District December thirteenth annual organizational board meeting. I am AESD president, board president Jackie Philbeck, and I call this meeting to order at five P M. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: llame al seis zero uno ocho seis uno cuatro uno cuatro cinco cuando se le pida introduzca el PIN cinco cuatro ocho cuatro tres cuatro zero cuatro siete y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment sessions in person by six thirty P M today. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment sessions in person by six thirty P M today. Let's begin with board roll call. To my far right, board member Juan G. Alvarez. Let's begin with board roll call. To my far right, board member Juan G. Alvarez.
Present.
Present.
Board member Mark Lopez. Board member Mark Lopez.
Present.
Present.
Board member Dr. Paulo Magalis. Board member Dr. Paulo Magalis.
Present.
Present.
Board clerk Ryan A. Rillas. Board clerk Ryan A. Rillas.
Present.
Present.
And I am board president Jackie Philbeck. And I am board president Jackie Philbeck. Public speakers, um, we have none. Public speakers, um, we have none. So we're going to adjourn to closed session. May I have a motion, please? So we're going to adjourn to closed session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second Alvarez.
Second Alvarez.
No discussion? All in favor? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I hear that as a unanimous? And I hear that as a unanimous? Onto closed session. Onto closed session.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see you all here. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District December thirteenth Annual Organizational Board Meeting, and I am AESD President Jackie Philbeck. I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al seis zero uno ocho seis uno cuatro uno cuatro cinco. Cuando se le pida introduzca el PIN cinco cuatro ocho cuatro tres cuatro zero cuatro siete y la tecla numeral. Okay. Let's begin with the flag salute, and we have a student, Poppy J. Walsh, from Benjamin Franklin, who will lead us in the salute this evening.
Put your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you, Poppy. Okay, I'd also like to recognize, although I don't see her, Board President Anne Marie Randall Trejo is here from Anaheim Union High School District. Where are you, Anne Marie? Oh, I see a tiny little hand back there. Okay, welcome. It's nice to have you here. Okay, now we're gonna go into our introductions and roll call portion of the agenda. To my far right, Board Member Juan G. Alvarez.
Good evening, everybody.
Next to him is Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Hello, good evening.
Board Member Dr. Paulo Magallas.
Hey, everybody.
And to my right, Board Clerk Ryan A. Relis.
Hello.
And as I said before, I'm your Board President, Jackie Philbeck. To my left, our Superintendent, Dr. Christopher Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Next to Dr. Downing is Dr. Mary Grace, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Hello, everyone.
Deena Meland, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jessie Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Hi, everyone.
Back over here, Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
Yasini Amancha, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening.
And in the back, we have our wonderful interpreters, Alina Avilarroje and Yasmin Anaya. Back over to the left, on the end here, the wonderful Technology Support Technician Janice Cato. And in the back, Brian Brooks and Benjamin Hausman, our Media Production Specialist. Now I have my report of closed session. Does it matter which I read first? Okay. By a vote of five to zero, the Board of Education approves the Hearing Officer's Recommendation and Determination based on a Notice of Proposed Dismissal and Statement of Charges to dismiss Classified Management Employee Number 12132023-05, effective December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The next matter, the Board of Education considered ratification of a settlement agreement in the matter of Anaheim Elementary School District versus Padre Associates, LASC case number 21STCV38804. The Board voted five in favor with zero abstentions and zero no votes to settle the case for $650,000. Now we're gonna move into the adoption of the agenda. Item nine D point one was removed at the request of the administration prior to the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was my second?
Paulo.
Paulo, thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes five zero. Okay, do we have any public speakers? We have none this evening. Okay. Moving into our Special Order of Business. This is, the Special Order of Business is our election of President of the Board of Education for two thousand and twenty-four. I need a motion of someone.
I'd like to motion that Ryan Ruelis be next President of Anaheim Union High School District Board of Trustees. Oh, Anaheim Elementary Board of Trustees, sorry.
Okay, I need a second. Any discussion? I just, Mark, did you have discussion? Okay, I'd just like to say that it's really a privilege to sit in this seat, and it has been an honor for me this past year, and I've enjoyed it. It's just really an exciting experience, and so I thank you for all the support that I have had in this position, because, believe me, a lot is needed. And I'm looking forward now to moving to the other end of the dais, and congratulations. Oh, we have to vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm a little anxious. It's a long year, but, okay, and I don't hear any abstentions, so congratulations on a vote of five oh. Mr. Relis, you are now the new President of Anaheim Elementary School District, and I wish you well sitting in this seat, and that's now we're gonna trade places, and this is yours.
I know it's gonna be hard giving this up.
It is kind of fun. Give me one second to organize here. Get out of your way, Ryan. Congratulations. And, okay, here you go, Ryan. Here's where you're at. There's where you're starting.
All right, cool, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Just one second. I got, thank you. Oh, I gotta come back for my water.
All right. All right, moving on. First off, thank you, former President Philbeck. I'm very excited to be in, serving our district in this capacity, and definitely look forward to it. But I will not be able to do it without a fantastic clerk, so I would like to now move on to the election of Clerk of the Board of Education for the two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Magallas as clerk. Motion, please.
I'll second. So I have a motion by Philbeck and a second by Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Clerk. Dr. Magallas. All right, moving on to the election of Representatives and Alternates for the two thousand twenty-three for the following committees. We're gonna start with the Nominating Committee for the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. We need a representative. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I've never done this of all the seven years I've been on board. This is one that I would like to try, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, it's not, it's not hard during, they let you know at what time of, they let you know what time of year.
Okay, so Paulo, that works for you?
Yeah, and then they'll give you instructions, and it's pretty easy. It's usually at a dinner in the October. You just go and cast a vote, or you can even do it online.
Is everybody good with Dr. Magallas for serving in this capacity?
Sure.
Great. Next is Parks and Recreation Commission Ex Oficio Representative.
I can go ahead and do that. I served faithfully as the alternate this last year, so I think I'm ready for regular member.
Trustee Lopez, anybody else?
Need alternates for these?
We do. We'll go ahead and do the alternates after.
Do we need an alternate for the nominating committee?
No. For Parks and Rec, the alternate basically is never gonna go, right? Okay, I'll take that. Okay?
But this year, both of us have gone to meetings together. It's very informational.
Maybe I'll go with you, Mark. So for the Parks and Recreation Commission Ex Oficio Representative, I have Trustee Lopez as our representative, and as our alternate being Mr. Alvarez, is that correct? Awesome. Let's move on. CSBA Legislative Network, a representative.
I think I've signed up for that before, or every year, and I never get any news or updates from CSBA.
I'm a delegate, so I can do it, and just, you know, in case.
I would like to continue as a rep, because I wanna, I'm interested in what they do with legislation, but how do I plug in? Because no one reaches out to me. Yeah.
I think I can find out.
Okay.
For you, and I'll be an alternate if one is needed.
Sounds good.
So Trustee Alvarez, you'd like to be the CSBA Legislative Network Representative, and Trustee Philbeck, you would like to be the alternate?
Sure.
Is everybody good with that? Great. Moving on, the Orange County School Boards Association Political Action Group Effort, also known as PAGE. Can I get a representative? Who would like to be a representative for PAGE?
I'd like to be alternate.
Can anybody explain it a little bit? Because I'm on the board for the Orange County School Board Association. I'm on that board, and I still don't really know. I haven't even heard anything, or, you know, does, Mary, do you know, or? Did somebody who, you wanted to be alternate, Dr. Magallas?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I mean, if nobody wants to do it, I'll do it, but I'm gonna definitely find out a little bit more about what they want from us. And am I, being on the board, I might already be doing it. Not knowing.
Well, as we're looking up for more detailed information about this specific position, let's go on to the Local Control Funding Formula, the LCFF, and Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP Advisory Committee. Can I get two representatives for this?
I'll go ahead and be, I'll volunteer as a representative.
So Lopez?
This is a committee I love to go to, but because of my job, I am not able to attend the meetings anymore.
No problem.
I wouldn't mind being for the alternate for that one as well.
Okay.
Mr. Relis, is it just one representative?
No, it's two.
It's two. Okay.
Would you like to be on that?
Yeah, if you need a second representative, and does anybody else wanna be the second representative?
I haven't been, I'm not on a committee yet, so I'll do that one.
All right. Yeah, please.
I don't wanna be seen as the slacker. All right, moving on. Dr. Downing has a length, some language here in regards to the, what exactly is a PAGE representative do?
So one board member from each school district in Orange County serves on this committee. The purpose is to address current issues and legislation affecting education. PAGE meets five times per year for thirty minutes per meeting. Meetings are held prior to each OCSBA dinner meeting and feature a speaker who is knowledgeable on the issue being discussed. Information is provided to the members to report back to their board and district.
Okay. Does any, is anyone interested in that? If not, I'll, Ryan, would you like to do it?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, you can, since I'm on the board anyways, I'll try to, and usually you're at most of the meetings.
All right, and our last one is AESD Parent/Teacher Association PTA Council/PLI Representative. That will be Trustee Philbeck.
I would love to do that again, unless, you know.
Anybody else?
If anybody else wants to do it, I'll still go.
All right, great, thank you all. So to just reiterate, I have the Nominating Committee for the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. The representative will be Dr. Paulo Magallas. For Parks and Recreation Commission Ex Oficio Representative, the representatives will be Mark Lopez, with the alternate being Trustee Alvarez. For CSBA Legislative Network, I have my representatives here, Trustee Alvarez with the alternate, Trustee Philbeck. For Orange County School Boards Association Political Action Group Effort, PAGE, I have Representatives Philbeck with the alternate, Dr. Magallas. For the Local Control Funding Formula and the Local Control Accountability Plan, I have my representatives here as Trustee Lopez and myself, with the alternate, Dr. Magallas. And for AESD Parent/Teacher Association PTA Council/PLI Representative, I have Trustee Philbeck. Can I get a motion?
Motion to accept the appointments as listed.
Motion by Alvarez.
Second.
Second by Lopez. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five oh. All right, moving on to the approval of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five board meeting schedule. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five board meeting schedule for the second Wednesday of each month, with exceptions noted, as presented in Exhibit Five D.
So moved.
Second Alvarez.
Moved by Dr. Magallas, seconded by Trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Moving on to E, Approval of the CSBA Professional Governance Standards. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four slash twenty-eight in support of the California School Board Association Professional Governance Standards, as presented in Exhibit Five E. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Lopez. Can I get a second?
I'll second Alvarez.
Seconded by Trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, now it's the time we've been waiting for. Let's move on to the recognition of District Y Distinguished Fourth Grade Creative Writing Project Winners. Presenting this recognition tonight, we have Elizabeth Dolter, a teacher on special assignment, Katie Hernandez, our curriculum specialist, Audrey Luhon, our head librarian with the Anaheim Public Library, Carol Latham, project chair and immediate past president with Altrusa International Foundation of Anaheim Incorporated. Please, take it away.
Good evening to our cabinet and board members, families, and writers. My name is Beth Dolter, the teacher on special assignment in Anaheim Elementary School District, and it has been my pleasure to be part of the Anaheim Creative Writing Project this year. I'd like to introduce Audrey Luhon from the Anaheim Public Library and Carol Latham of Altrusa International of Anaheim, who will share more about this collaborative project. who will share more about this collaborative project that celebrates student voices.
Can I pick this up a little bit like that? Okay, great, alright. First of all, it is an honor and a privilege to be before the board of the Anaheim Elementary School District. Again, after how many years? A lot, okay. So anyways, thank you very much for, and very important, your superintendent in supporting this major creative writing project that has an impact, has an impact not only on the scholars, the students, the writers, but everybody else that reads them. So I, I'm saying hello to all the faces I saw at the Anaheim City Council. How are y'all doing? You good? Are you excited? Okay, good. So you saw the zine, right? I showed it to you, but tonight you're gonna get it in your packet. And this is for the school board as well. You've got, oh, good, you've got your copies of the zine. Alright, so basically, what this project means from the library's viewpoint is that children have the oper, the creative opportunity to share their thoughts. And some of the stories, when, please take the time to read them. Some of the stories will make you laugh, others will make you cry, and others will just make you think. And that's the creativity that each one of these children put into their award-winning, award-winning piece of literature. So parents, thank you very much for supporting your children through this process because they basically are making a difference in their own lives because they're telling their story. But everybody else that reads them because they're at the Anaheim Public Library, they're part of a circulating, we are the only, Anaheim Public Library is the only circulating zine collection in the county, so your neighbors, et cetera, could be checking this out. Yes, so it's part of, and when we have OC Zine Fest, that's once again creative writers, that are, there are adults that write zines as well, creative art writers. These zines will be part of that. So congratulations.
Good evening to the Anaheim Elementary School District Board of Trustees. That's a lot of words all at one time. And good evening to the parents, the teachers, and most especially to the students. This project came about, about nine years ago and we went, the Altrusa Club went to the library and said, you know, what if we did something like this, a creative writing project? And did it in all twenty-four schools? And our city librarian said, no, we're not going to do it in all twenty-four schools to start off with. We're going to do it in one school and we'll get it right in one school and then we'll move on from there. And I am forever grateful to her for sort of reining me in and letting us get it right in one school. And we started in Ponderosa. And we actually were in Ponderosa in grades four, five, and six. And we did that for a couple of years and the teachers came back to us and said, you know, can we do it in just one grade? And collectively, we decided that grade four was the proper grade to do it in because the students are just at that point learning to write creatively. And so we did it in grade four for another year. And then we were fortunate to add two additional schools, Lincoln and Olive Street. And at the presentation of the Lincoln Creative Writing Project, our new superintendent was in attendance and he came up to me and he says, why isn't this in all twenty-four schools? And I thought, wow, okay, why isn't it? And he said, well, you know, next year it will be. And the following year, it was in all twenty-four Anaheim Elementary School Districts, grade four. Not just as an added component, but an integral part of the curriculum. And so now, we are, nine years later, we've just added two additional schools that are in Anaheim, but are part of the Centrelia School District. And we were just there doing an awards, just like we're doing here tonight. Part of this is a real thank you as well. And I want to congratulate all of the authors, all of the teachers for, yes, I'm seeing it there. And congratulating you on, you know, encouraging your students or your child to read and to write. Your teachers have given you guidance and supported this project and we appreciate that as well. And thank you to Superintendent Downing for so enthusiastically embracing this project. To the library, my partner in crime. Yes. And you know, through this project, we have really found that we've impacted the lives of so many students through this project. The name and the theme of the essay has not changed from the very first day that we started working on this. It's remained finding my voice, telling my story. And in school, you know, they can, they can write essays about the flag or how I spent my summer vacation or, you know, any other types of things. But this particular prompt really allows them to share their voice and for those teachers to see who that child is sitting in their classroom. To the students, I want to say, you're exactly who you are because who you are is important and valuable. You are important to yourself and to everyone else. If you're not exactly who you are, someone very important will be missing from this world and the life experience. Who you are, where you are, what you know up to this moment gives you value. It can either make your life important or it can discount the importance of your life. How much you believe in who you are, serve where you are and use what you know can make a huge difference in who you become, where you go, and what you do to the next phase of your life, whether it is staying grade four or moving up to grade five. And I want you to know that your words and your actions are important and that they matter. Your voice matters. And more importantly, would all of you students stand up for me? More importantly than anything, you matter. Thank you.
Alright, we are ready to celebrate our authors. Just a little preview, inside your backpack, you're going to get a copy of the zine. You're final, you're finally gonna get your hands on it. You're a published author now and you're going to get this sweatshirt. Ooh, ah! As well as many other goodies. So when your name is called, please come forward. Dr. Downing is going to present you with your certificate and you are going to shake the hands of the board members and you will stay up front here for a photo. Alright, first up. Oh yeah, let's show some of those goodies. So the zine promised. You have certificates from our California Senator as where, as well as Assembly Member. You have a copy, a hard copy of a book, generous donation from Altrusa. You have a journal to continue your writing. You have a resource book to help you as you continue to grow as an author and a few writing instruments. And your handy dandy sweatshirt. Alright, first up, Mirabelle Hines. Hong Nguyen. Alvaro Pons. Poppy J. Walsh. Ariana Keely. Isabel Espinosa. Audrey Ellis. Danica Nguyen. Emma Zabala. Leah Rodriguez. Marwa Salimi. Ethan Nguyen. Emerson Faraday. Ava Ramirez-Marcas. Melody Enriquez. Genesis Trevino. Yaretsi Barrientos Wakleyol. Emiliano Urano. Aaron Baez. Adam Ford Means. Sofia Camacho. Santiago Talamantes. Cash James Mendez. And last but not least, Millie Bustamante Hernandez. So we are going to have the students stay up here so that we can get a big group photo. There we go, look at this, perfect. Parents, if you wanted to come close.
Okay, team, we're gonna go ahead and recess for a ten-minute break, okay? We'll be coming back here at 7:15. We'll be coming back here at 7:15. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order at 7:15. And we're gonna go just right back into business with letter G. Our Measure G and J Citizens Oversight Committee approved annual report for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. And that is Ms. Jesse Alvarez, the committee chair.
And Relas, members of the board. As you know, every year, a member of our Citizens Oversight Committee, who oversee that we spend, you know, the Measure G and J funds the right way, based on the literature and what we proposed, right? Come to you to present our annual report. This evening, Ms. Jesse Alvarez, parent representative and our current committee chair, will give you that annual report.
I was, good evening, everybody. I was joking earlier, they were like, oh, and Jesse Tavario will introduce you. And I was like, well, they all know exactly who I am. So, good evening, new board president, Relas. The rest of our esteemed board and our cabinet. Um, thank you very much. So again, Jesse Alvarez, I'm the current chair for the Measure G and J Citizens Oversight Committee. Uh, it is my pleasure to present the annual report for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, um, for our bond measures. The committee consists of different educational and community partners across the district. Uh, you have the full report detailing the committee's activities. Um, I'd like to just highlight a few of those activities. Um, we received presentations by the auditors, uh, full and complete audit, performance audits, and financial audits. Um, we review bond issuance details. Uh, my personal favorite, visits to construction projects. So we saw the added safety measures such as taller fencing, continuing rollout of single point of entry enhancements, um, construction of additional NPRs in progress, um, the walking track at Roosevelt, and the innovative designs from our own Isala Vascas, who could not be here today, um, for the new shade structures at, um, the new shade structures at Westmont. Um, so, we, the committee, met on October 7th, 2022, December 2nd, 2022, March 3rd, 2023, and June 2nd, 2023. So in conclusion, based upon the listed activities, the Citizens Oversight Committee advises the public that the district is in compliance with Article 13A, Section 1B, 3 of the California Constitution. Bond proceeds have been expended, have been expended on projects set forth in the ballot measure. No bond proceeds have been used for teacher or administrative salaries or other school operating expenditures. Audits have been performed as prescribed by law. So that concludes my report. Are there any questions or comments? I told Jackie, I was, I'm a brief.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Moving on to news and updates, parent leadership group updates, DAC, D-LAC, PLI, PTA. No parent leadership updates tonight. Uh, association updates, AEA, ASMA, or CSEA. No association updates tonight. And last but not least, communications and public information. Belinda Gordillo, communications coordinator, please.
Good evening, board members, cabinet, and Dr. Downing and community. Um, my name is Belinda Gordillo, and I'm excited to share the news and updates for the last month. Um, we'll dive right in. On November 9th, we had, um, the Anaheim Ducks visit Betsy Ross. And it was such a treat because all day long, they had staff members that were reading with the kids in the classrooms. They had two Mighty Ducks players that read to the whole school. Um, students were asking them questions. They had their mascot, Wildwing, that was, um, engaging with the students, and they had a hockey rink. Overall, it was just a wonderful, wonderful day for all of the students. So we want to thank the Anaheim Ducks for, for, um, doing this for our students. And congratulations to Edison. They were acknowledged for the month of November for the most improved attendance. So this is something we're gonna continue doing because it really does, um, uh, recognize the, the hard work of the students and the families. And the, you know, the importance of attendance stays at the forefront of everyone. And we have some pictures of our students that were recognized with the Paleta Cart. And we have, um, Dr. Downing that goes to each school every month, and thanks, uh, the students. So that's always, um, a great thing every month. And on November 27th, the Nutcracker, um, performed, uh, through the, um, ballet performance at the Anaheim Grove. And our students were invited. We had close to 900 students attend this event. And it was just a, a beautiful event and a wonderful experience for our students as well. Um, in November, uh, Horace Mann received the CABE Seal of Excellence Awards for the Dual Immersion Program. So the program that started in preschool, they're now in sixth grade. So huge accomplishment, and we want to thank our educators, our parents for their trust, our students, and, you know, just everyone that's made this possible. And also in November, um, AESD received the Dual Immersion Golden Bell Award, and it's right there. And it really does work, it's, it's real. And, you know, we're, we're so grateful for the support of our board members who came out and who, um, shared the, the day with us. And also all of our staff members who've been behind the Dual Immersion Program. AESD continues, it's, it's the one, um, only school district that has all of its 24 schools that have this program. So we're really proud of that. And then on December 7th, we had another successful Anaheim Succeeds event, um, through the ELOP program. And we had a lot of students from Mann, from Price, and Marshall that performed, um, their Focorico dance and their mariachi performances. And we had a wealth of information for all the families. So that was a, a really great night, and the theme was Light Up the World. So, thank you to our ELOP who keeps enriching the lives of our students before and after school. And on December 7th, um, our very own Dr. Downing received the Quantum Impact Courageous Award for his transformational leadership at the Q10 Equity and Education Conference. So as I mentioned, AESD is the only school that offers our Dual Immersion Program. And Dr. Downing was recognized for his leadership, for this tremendous accomplishment and everything else that he does. So congratulations, Dr. Downing. Very well deserved. And some very, very happy news for the students of Orange Grove. Last Saturday, um, Lifestyle Cycles, which is located in Anaheim, sponsored the school with hundreds of gifts. They had 300 assembled bicycles that they gave the students of Orange Grove, and also a lot of other gifts. So you'll see some pictures, but the, the smiles on these kids were just priceless. They, it was very, very heartwarming to see, um, the parents too, that they were able to, to bring, you know, the holiday cheer to all of our students there. And so Lifestyle Cycles had, um, hundreds of people that came out. But days prior, they were assembling the bikes. And every single bike went through quality control. It was hundreds and hundreds of hours that they devoted. And a few days before, we had a preview and we had some media attention. Um, and so, I just, you know, we would like to thank Lifestyle Cycles, and we've invited them to come to our next board meeting, so hopefully they join us. And last but not least, on December 11th, this past Monday, we recognized, um, seven employees for their hard work and dedication to AESD. They're nominated for, um, Classified Employees of the Year. And they are Analilia Aguilar. She's a Faces employee at Madison. She's been with AESD for nine years. And then Felicia Galindo. She is a School Office Coordinator for the Online Academy. She's been with AESD for 23 years. Maria Alejo is a roving preschool teacher. She's been with AESD for 19 years. Rosio Ortiz is a Campus Supervisor at Ross. She's been here seven years. Ubaldo Serna, he's, um, Maintenance and Operations employee. He's been with AESD for 17 years. Um, Mark Miao is a Programmer Analyst. He's been with AESD for eight years. And last but not least, Katie Blessed. She's a dispatcher here at the district. She's been with, uh, AESD for eight years. So, Dr. Downing and President Philback, um, and Mr. Hallman from Human Resources surprised each of these, uh, employees for their hard work and just surprised them during the day and brought them flowers and thanked them for their hard work. So we want to thank every one of these wonderful employees for their time and dedication. Okay, and I don't have a slide for, um, for upcoming events, but I did want to share, Mr. Mark Lopez brought it to my attention, and also Ms. Philback has brought it to my attention. The Anaheim Public Library has events every month. One of them being a conversational, um, day where people can come and speak, speak in your, in your language, work with other people that are bilingual, trying to increase their bilingual skills. So go to their website, they have events going on during the break as well. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. If you want something to do with kids, um, go out to one of the libraries, Sunkist or the regular one, okay? And does anybody have any questions for me? No? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Moving on, superintendent's report. We're gonna start first with the pledge update. Maria Vegas, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Well, good evening, uh, school board, President Relas. Uh, cabinet members, so Dr. Downing, thank you for having me this evening. It's my pleasure to give an update about the pledge. So, the pledge, it's a partnership that we have with Anaheim Union High School and our local, um, city members, a couple of community colleges, and of course Cal State Fullerton and UC Irvine. And it's a collaborative that comes together to focus on one thing, which is to ensure that our students are college and career ready, that they meet their post-secondary goals through some very deliberate actions from, from all these partners that you see listed here. So, in this process, we kind of had to identify, what's our role? We're an elementary school district. Where do we fit in this 7/13 piece of the pie, if you will? And I'll go over just the journey and how we've gotten here. But we, we came together and really defined, what is gonna be our role? What is gonna be our purpose? And we came to a definition. So what you have in front of you is what we So what you have in front of you is what we defined to be our commitment, which was to provide all students with an intentional comprehensive support system that integrates all stakeholders, which for us is our students, our parents, our, our educators, to increase their readiness and preparation for that meaningful engagement in junior high, because that's their first step and then into high school, which then leads to that success in post-secondary schools and ultimately to be those global citizens that we want and, and local Anaheim citizens of, of our own city as well. Another one of the drivers or the why, you know, especially being in an elementary school district, I think more than ever, we have to be very deliberate about aligning with our high school district to having a very clear pathway. So our parents are not having to relearn new systems, new, new information, but to really make it seamless. To them, they just know their child is being educated and we want them to know that it's, it's a system, whether, you know, sometimes you catch someone on the street and you're saying, well, I'm the elementary school district and you're trying to explain, and then there's a high school district. Ultimately, it's about one system and through the pledge, we're able to collaborate and have these articulations and conversations for our families. And that's a big why for why we're part of the pledge. Also too, also, I didn't include it here, but I think we're all passionate about this to mitigate what we know happens in terms of completion rates for students at the college level, usually our most vulnerable students. You see a completion rate of only, what, nine percent of students actually completing college? Those are students from the lowest socioeconomic quadrant, if you will, while your students at that more, more affluent level, you have seventy-plus percent. So knowing that the pledge is a part and wanting to ensure that there's very clear support so that our students not only get into college, but complete college. All right. So what you have here is our, our pledge matrix, if you will, and I'm just going to walk you through. It's a document that we created again to identify what are going to be those commitments, those things that we come around as a district to say that we're going to provide for our students. So on the left, you have the driver. So what, what, what's going to really drive and have an impact for our students and families? So we identified four drivers on the left. One is missing and I know they're little and they are linked to the presentation, but you have, we want to provide holistic education, college and, college and career pathway, parent engagement, and professional learning. And then across the top, you have those grade level spans. In the middle, in the white area, those are all the commitments, all the actions that we're going to be doing in those respective areas to really support and ensure that we have a comprehensive system for our students. So where are we now? The pledge, similarly to the, the writing that was spoken about earlier, started about nine years ago, no, I'm sorry, about seven years ago now, two thousand eight, seventeen, eighteen. I just tried to depict a little map, you know, in terms of having those initial conversations with the high school district and, and really identifying a vision for students, knowing that the end goal. And through that path, then we identified a matrix, we brought together a task force of teachers, principals, district people to, to really identify that matrix that I showed you before. And then the last couple of years, and then in two thousand nineteen, we started implementing, really the push was from the district. And then most recently, we're at really that sustaining, which is sites implementing at their own site, giving it kind of their own flair, if you will, but, but still having those core tenants that I shared on the matrix. So I really look at us, we're just sustaining everything that we have, we've tried to integrate it into what's already existing and happening. So it's not an add-on, but it's how the work is happening within our existing initiatives, if you will, and for our schools, to ensure it's just part of the culture of what we do. So I'm going to talk in the next couple of slides, some examples of some of those commitments or actions that you have in each of those drivers. So the first one there is our first commitment or our driver of providing our students a holistic education. And what that means is that we're always looking here at an elementary school district at developing the whole child. Yes, the, the academics, but we also are very committed to the social, emotional well-being of our students to ensure they have that strong foundation to start. And I just highlighted some pictures there of some of those things that really reflect that holistic education, which there on the top left, you know, it is our inaugural year of having a preschool, oh no, I'm sorry. What you have on the top left is music. Music is now happening in all the preschool classrooms. Again, it was TK to six and now we're ensuring that even our preschool classrooms are getting classroom weekly. Of course, our dual language program happening across all schools, also in preschool, which was not happening before. You have there the scholar talks, which is that young man in that nice little suit presenting about something they're passionate about, something that's important to them, where a topic of their choice and it's all fifth and sixth graders are expected to create, only twenty-four perform at our showcase. But again, that expectation that close to four thousand students are participating in these types of experiences. There in the middle, you have Code, Play Code Compete, that annual event at the River Arena and then our also Scratch, The Scratch, where students are creating their own computer science projects and showcasing them to their peers. And then on the bottom right, which is what you had here tonight, was, because I didn't have a picture of it at the time, but it was just showcasing also, those are our same fourth grade students that were recognized about two weeks ago at the Anaheim City School, Anaheim, I'm sorry, Anaheim City Council Meeting and also recognized for their writing. Small little thing about that, nine years ago when that started, very proud principal, which was me at Ponderosa, but what was so powerful about the zine and, and that is that students were telling their story. I'm still passionate about it, hearing Carol Latham talk about it, but I think nine years ago, and now that I reflect on it, it was giving, starting to open that window of student voice and them sharing their stories and us hearing the, what children had to say. And I remember at the time, I was like, oh no, we don't want them to talk about if, if their family's having troubles or this or that. It made people uncomfortable for some of the topics. But that's how you know your students. And there's a quote that I love that says, "To serve our students well, you need to know them well." And I just wanted to highlight that. That's what that fourth grade writing really does for students. So I, I'm excited about that. That's still continuing. Here is our college and career pathway, some examples that are consistent, again, practices across our whole district. You have what we've established now to ensure that we're having a college and career week at every school and that we've aligned it with that gear up time with the high school district. In the past, it was happening, you know, at different times in the year, but really aligning our schools to, it's a time to start preparing yourself and, because we know applications start in November and it's going to be familiar for kids if we start these practices early. So we're really excited about that. You see an example of, you know, from Sunkist there, Elementary, I think Dr. Downing presented there, students dressing up in who their future selves to be. Excuse me. Different speakers, also our college bound posters that are, and every banners that are in every classroom and students just again envisioning, getting excited about what their future may hold for them, but giving them the opportunity to dream and start putting that into action through our college and career week. Of course, it's a partnership with the high school district where they also host and were invited and are part of their college and career week, such an opportunity for our families to again be part of that bigger landscape, to understand how these opportunities, what those pathways will start to look like by having them attend these types of events. The high school district is always very deliberate in trying to see how we can engage our elementary students. So they, they had ducks where students with the five Cs had to go around the event looking for the ducks as a way to, to ensure that they would visit the different booths. And there's one of our students, of course, he was anxiously awaiting for the opening of the event that evening. So we're excited about that. Some other examples of that college career pathway with Kendrick Aminata, usually happens in about February. We had about eight hundred and fifty students participate last year. And again, it's just that explode, that exposure and that experience of being on a college campus. That's a partnership with Fullerton College. You also see our part, our participation in Steam of Palooza. We had about six hundred plus students from all of our elementaries participate, exploring the different pathways, experiencing firsthand what the different pathways may feel like, excuse me, as, as a potential career for them. And then finally, you have our high school senior cap and gown walks. We're, again, we're, we're providing that vision for our students of what, what their path may look like and it's, it's exciting when they see their own brothers and sisters kind of walking through that line and to just feel that support from their own community, I think is really exciting and very authentic and for all involved. Our family engagement driver there, just highlighted a couple of things. Again, annually, we have pledge parent presentations from, for also our sixth grade students and for our parents by Anaheim High School ASB students, student ambassadors who come and present and share about all the benefits and the, the, what the pledge has to offer and how to prepare. And it's really helpful information for both students, again, as they see themselves in the presenter and then for our families to start planning for that information. In the middle there, that's also a pledge commitment to ensure that, you know, all schools are, are having, offering our families the opportunity to, to learn and participate in the ten educational essentials. That class is starting up in January. It's, it's led by PLI parents as, as, you know, they're, our own parents are mentors to others, which is very powerful in them leading those classes. And finally, upcoming, another example that's on our pledge is to always have parent learning walks. And we've talked about how that really connects whatever it is that we're trying to develop understanding in our families is sometimes you need to see it. So that's a commitment that's in the pledge. Here is an example of a early learning, parent learning walk that we're going to be having for our PLI parents, for our preschool parents to really come out and see examples of early learnings, hear different dual lan, dual language programs and, and just get a real sense of how they can support their children early on. Also part of that parent engage it driver is, you know, providing those opportunities for parents again to be on college campuses and, and provide them with topics that are going to support their overall planning for their students. On the left, you have Fullerton College Parent Summit that took place already at the end of September. We were able to have about a hundred of our parents participate. Transportation is provided there. And then upcoming in January is going to be the summit at Cal State Fullerton. And then finally, the last driver that we have on there is to ensure that we're providing professional learning that's going to best prepare our students to be successful in junior high and high school. So I've, I've highlighted some key pieces there, which is of course, our structured literacy. You know, students need to be able to read so that they're able to then engage in the content and all those other wonderful future experiences. So we, we've, we've ensured that our matrix is always being updated as we adapt and change as it should to reflect and be responsive to what's happening. But one of the newest things there is that letters training. I'm happy to come talk to you more about what we're doing to support literacy. Letter stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Writing. And it's a two-year commitment from our teachers to really focus and learn about the science of how a child learns to read. It's, it's the settled science of the brain research. And honestly, for all of us that are teachers in the room, you get to a classroom and your college prepared you, but it didn't necessarily prepare you for the day by day of how to teach children how to read. So this is something we're very excited about. We have about a hundred and forty teachers participating in letters training and we're hoping to continue the goal would, would be to at least have eighty percent of our K-one teachers trained in letters to ensure that we mitigate those gaps early on. You have there numeracy, again, CGI is something cognitive guided instruction. We talk about starting with students' assets, what they know, and then building their problem solving and mathematical thinking from there. That's what CGI is. And again, a, a practice that really extends instead of just students wrote memorizing facts that aren't really building concept understanding for the long run. So we have a couple of cohorts of CGI currently going now. We have about a hundred and fifty teachers who have been trained, a very, again, comprehensive thirty-hour training for that. That gets completed in one year. So we're hoping to be able to continue that. And of course, our other focus on social, emotional learning as we look at the whole child, ensuring that there's daily instruction in social, emotional learning through our adopted curriculum of second step and, and then having those practices of restorative practices in, in classrooms so that students feel safe seeing and heard in their classrooms so that they can excel at that highest level. And lastly, the last couple of years, we've been very responsive and being more deliberate about how we're responding to having culturally linguistically responsive curriculum and teaching practices in our classrooms and, and amongst our culture and community, if you will, through shining light on what implicit bias, how it impacts our classroom, our teaching and our students, you know, success, if, if we're not mindful of that. And I think that's all I have for you tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions or...
Great, thank you for the thorough presentation. Do we have any questions?
Yes, I got a couple of questions, comments for you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
First, I just wanted to ask, because I did see, you know, City of Anaheim being a partner, seen their logo there on slide number two. And I know we had a visit to their council meeting recently. Are we also invited to any of their other facilities for our students to attend, maybe fire stations, park rangers, different job opportunities? Since we are going on college field trips and things like that too, I just wonder.
That's a great question. That hasn't been formalized at a matrix level, but it happens regularly with, with school sites. Reaching out to their local fire station, reaching out and the city is so supportive in any of, of, of always making their public employees available. So that's, it isn't formalized on the matrix, but I, I, I'm confident in saying that it's something that happens and formally at every school site through that collaboration.
And they are the main and highlighted presenters during the college and career week? Like that's the student favorites because they bring the cars, they bring the trucks. Also, the Metropolitan Water District is a good partner. Our students participate in the art contest and then are recognized at the city. So there's a couple of examples.
I'm glad we're continuing to forge that partnership with the city. So thank you. Slide ten, we talked about the student ambassadors from Anaheim Union High School District. When those presentations happen, could you please send those out? I might like to try to attend those just as my schedule permits.
Absolutely. We're in the process of school sites are signing up right now, providing some, some dates that would work for their school site and we're arranging that. The presentations are due to happen between January and April. So as soon as we have that schedule finalized, we'll be happy to share and with the presentation as well.
Okay, great. And then just kind of touching the City of Anaheim topic again, do we also have partnerships with other trades, that sort of thing? These are our college and career. So I'm wondering, do we also have other partnerships with apprenticeships to the, outside of just the city as well? Carpenter's Union, things like that at all that they're able to see?
And I do think that this is something that we could really look into considering we operate with community benefits agreements and whatnot, so...
And one of the things that I think has really evolved and I think is amazing, you know, typically they would invite us to come and speak, not that there's anything wrong with hearing the pathway of educators, but a lot of our staff within the district, our fiscal staff, our facility staff are also out there. One preschool invited the MNO staff to come out and bring tractor, you know, their equipment. We had to negotiate that because you couldn't have all the equipment at the same school at the same time, but it, it's really nice to start involving other aspects of the district even.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question, for those questions.
I'm just real quick.
I'm just real quick, another another amazing presentation. Thank you so much, Mrs. Viegas. And I like that Mark brought up those questions because the beauty of the pledge is that it's organic, right? We're always creating things through our partnerships, through our feeder high school districts, all these opportunities for our families, our students and our communities. And I just want to not just thank you, but our cabinet and all of the staff for allowing for those opportunities. But I think, yes, it is important that we make it intentional, that we put it into the matrix. And again, thank you for all our partnerships. Thank you, President Randall Trejo. I know that Anaheim Union led the way with the pledge and, you know, it's just growing. And I I can't wait to see where it goes. And of course, our university partners as well. So thank you so much.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our 2023-24 first interim budget with Jesse Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening once again, Board President Reyes, members of the board. This evening, I'll be presenting to you the first interim report. Before I get going though, I do want to acknowledge the hard work of our fiscal and business departments in getting the information ready for for our report. And also acknowledge their respective leaders, Priscilla Martinez, Matt Slusser, and Eduardo de la Cruz. And both Eduardo and Matt are here to assist me in case you ask me any difficult questions that I may not be able to answer, so. So what is the first interim? As you know, part of the budget process, we present to you interim reports. And these interim reports basically capture what happens in the span of four months. In this situation, the first interim report captures all revenues and expenditures from July 1st through October 31st. We use that information to update our projections in terms of how we're going to do the rest of the fiscal year. And then we'll come to you with another report in the form of the second interim report in March for presenting that information to you. So in creating the first interim report, we have to make certain assumptions. The first assumption there is ADA funding of $14,227 this year. That's based on a three-year average. I do want to call attention to that number because a year ago, as I was presenting to you at this time, that number was $15,005, right? So that means a loss of almost 800 ADA in terms of funding, which equates to about $11 to $12 million for the district. Other assumptions, LCFF fully funded, STIRS rate of 19.1, purse rate of 26.6, and of course lottery funding of $177 per ADA unrestricted and $72 per ADA restricted. So let's take a look at what happened since the board adopted the budget back in June in terms of what's happened all the way through October 31st. The first thing, the change you're going to see there is LCFF revenue. You're going to see $3 million more in revenue, and this has to do with our unduplicated pupil increase. So when we put the budget together, the budget you approved had an 85% unduplicated count thanks to Dr. Grace, her team, and working with their schools. We can probably say that at the time we created the the first interim report, that unduplicated count had grown gone up to 89.7%. And I know she presented at LCAP that it was up to 90% unofficially, so so we're really proud of that. Under federal revenue, you're going to see a decrease of $600,000. This is mainly due to the reduction in title funding from the federal government. Under state revenue, you're going to see an increase of $7.5 million. This has to do with funds that have recently come into the district, like Prop 28 at $2.6 million, which is the Arts and Music Grant. Community schools, we actually received the the funds that were promised, so it's about $2.4 million. And then special education, IB 602, about $800,000. And there was an adjustment in lottery funds of $500,000. And then pre-K planning grant, about $1.2 million, that were not in the budget when it was adopted. And then under local revenue, you're going to see an increase of $2.1 million. Where, you know, it's a good thing interest rates are high in some ways because we do have some money that we keep in the county treasury. So because of that, we earned $1.5 million in terms of interest in the money we have there. And so that's part of that $2.1 million that you'll see. And then interagency revenues. This is the money that we get from other districts in terms of serving the some of the students that they send over to us. This is $400,000 more than we expected. And then OC REACH grant, even though we know about the grant, we don't recognize it until we actually receive the money. And we have received that money, $220,000. So the table here shows you the numbers, the information I just provided to you. Under LCFF, at a budget adoption, we had $222.1, $222.8 million. At first interim, we're recognizing $225.8, a difference of $3 million based on that unduplicated increase that I just mentioned. Under federal revenue, at adopted budget, it was $24.3 million. First interim is $23.7, a reduction of $600,000. Like I said, mainly due to the reduction in title funds. Under state revenue, at the time of a budget adoption, $60.3 million. That increased to $67.8, a difference of $7.5 million based on what I mentioned, Prop 28, community schools, right, pre-K planning, and also the special ed additional funding. And under local revenue, at adopted budget, it was $3.7 million. That grew to $5.9 million. Like I mentioned, the interest we earn, $1.5 million and additional funding from serving students from other districts as well as the grant from OC REACH. So overall, total revenue at adopted budget was $311.3 million. First interim, $323.4, an increase of $12 million. So the pie chart here shows you where our revenue comes from. As you can see, the bulk of it comes from LCFF sources. So let's take a look at expenditures. What are some of those changes from the bu- budget adoption to first interim? Under salaries and benefits, and we combine it because they go hand in hand, that has to do with hiring additional community school leadership assistants. Teacher subs are costing us about $300,000 more than we had budgeted. Extra duty for teachers, an additional $200,000 there. And then whatever corresponding benefits that go with that in terms of a statutory. And then also, at the time when the 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 budget was adopted, at that point, we had not negotiated an agreement in terms of health and welfare benefits. So, you know, employees were supposed to pick up those costs. Since then, we negotiated an agreement and we're picking up $2.6 million of that cost over the cap. Under books and supplies, you're going to see there $2 million less. It doesn't mean that we're not spending that money. What it means is departments and schools, as they have started working now. So for example, if we gave a school about $100,000 in ELAP funds for materials and supplies, they might have discovered that they need $20,000 in order to support their after-school program to pay extra duty assignments. So maybe they took $20,000, reallocated that $100,000 and took $20,000 from there. So the $2 million reduction is more adjustments that were made either by departments or by schools. And under services, another operating cost, it's an increase of $7.1 million. This has to do mostly with additional contracts for our extended school day, right? As well as community school contracts and special education contracts as well. And then under capital outlay, another outgoing, you're going to see a decrease of $2.5 million there. This is mainly due to a roofing project that is quite expensive, but we need to bid it out and we don't think we'll get it done in time in this fiscal year. So that's why we're kind of subtracting that cost from there. So you see the numbers here on the table, exactly how I explained them to you. Under certificated salaries, you see a difference, a change of $1.6 million there. Under classified salaries, you see a difference of $430,000. And under benefits, $2.6 million there. So it's based on the information I just provided. Under supplies, like I mentioned, we projected to spend $18.6 at adopted budget. Our first interim, $16.5, which it's a decrease of $2 million there. Under services, we projected to spend $32.2 million at adopted budget. At first interim, $39.3 million, an increase of $7.1 million. And I explain this mostly to our contracts that we have entered with our extended school day. Under capital outlay, I explained that that we have an increase, a decrease of $2.3 million. So it's going from 13 point, 13.1 million to 10.7 million. And under other outgoing, a difference of $64,000, so it pretty much stays the same. As well as indirect, there's a difference of $144,000. So overall, our adopted budget, it was $330.7 million. Our expenditures are projected at first interim at $336.9 million. That's an increase of $6.2 million. So the pie chart here, once again, shows you each of the expenditures as they pertain to the entire pie. As you can see, the bulk of our expenditures, like always, are invested in our employees. So as part of the first interim report, we have to put together a multi-year projection. And in order to put that multi-year projection, we have to make assumptions about what's going on. So I'll read out those assumptions for you. In terms of enrollment for this year, $14,321. For next year, we're projecting $13,921. And for '25-'26, $13,721. For LCFF COLA, 8.22% this year, 3.94%. And I'll come back to that for next year and 3.29% for the following year. That 3.94%, we put it in there because the governor technically hasn't said anything about COLA, even though the legislator analyst office has already said that the COLA is probably going to be 1.26, if there's one, right, kind of thing. But we felt at this time that what's known is 3.94% and that's what we put in this report. Under STIRS and purse, we're projecting a cost of $47.2 million this year, $47.5 million next year, and $43.2 million in '25-'26. In step in column, basically, 2.4% this year, 2.4% next year, and 2.2% the following year in '25-'26. So revenue projection for '23-'24, $323.4 million, $299.3 million for next year, and $290.5 million for '25-'26. So what does this mean to our fund balance, our reserves? This means this year, revenue is $323.4 million. We expect to spend $336.9 million, giving us a deficit of $13.5. We have a beginning fund balance of $93.7 million. It leaves us $80.2 million at the end of '23-'24. For '24-'25, we expect revenue at $299.3 million, expenses at $336.1 million, giving us a deficit of $36.7 million. With the beginning fund balance of $80.2 million, it leaves us $43.4 million in our ending fund balance in '24-'25. And then in '25-'26, revenue at $290.5 million, expenses at $311.5 million, giving us a deficit of almost $21 million with the beginning fund balance of $43.4 million, leaving us $22.4 million in '25-'26. So future considerations, of course, enrollment projections. One positive is that from our demographer, they are projecting that we'll be picking up some students from some of the development that's happening. And maybe some stability in the next coming years, right? Where it's not a decline so severely of 200, 300 students, but more kind of keeping pace or maybe losing 30 to 40 students at the most. Our attendance rates, although our schools are working really hard to get our students here every day, we're still hovering around 92, 93%. Before COVID, we were as high as 97%. So this will impact us because, you know, attendance is what drives ADA. Our unduplicated population, we're excited about that 90%, but we got to maintain that. So it does take some work for that. Of course, textbook adopt- adoptions because they're kind of costly. The COLA adjustments, at this point, we don't know what the COLA actually will be next year, right? And special education costs, they keep increasing, right? And then, of course, inflation is still something to think about. It's something I didn't put here, but I did want to mention, as you know, the state is facing a $68 billion deficit. That impact to education is $18 billion, right? We won't have an idea in terms of what they're technically thinking about doing, but there are some things being proposed. And of course, like anything in life, they want to start with maybe monies that haven't been yet given to districts. And for that, I know that we're looking to apply for community schools, but that'd be, that might be something that they consider not funding, right? Of course, it's something that the governor really values, so that's to come. But I just want to make the board aware that more than likely, if there are any cuts this year, it'll be more with monies that haven't been allocated yet to districts, okay? And there is a plan to use that rainy day fund $10 billion, but that still leaves a gap for this year of $5 billion. And there's talk about with the zero COLA next year, it helps offset whatever deficit they have going on. The problem is that it looks really bad even for the next following two years after that, right? So that deficit of $68 billion will would grow more significantly if if things don't happen at the state level. But I know the big talk, and that is positive for us, is that they're trying to not impact our education funds as much as possible. Because in the past, they could have easily said, let's take those $18 billion and take them out of Prop 98 because even by reducing by $18 billion, they are still over the the minimum guarantee. But there's no talk about that. So we're excited about that and hopefully they'll come up with different solutions. But we'll come back to the board after that January budget presentation from the governor to kind of give you some ideas of what the governor's thinking in terms of a budget for next year. So we do want to recommend to the board that the board certifies that our our first interim as positive, meaning that we can meet our obligations this year as well as the two odd years, right? And then in terms of next steps, we'll be presenting to you the audit report in January. And also, the Budget Advisory Committee will be meeting in January and we'll talk to them about the first interim and other budget considerations as well. We'll be reviewing, like I mentioned, the governor's proposed 24-25 budget. And then we'll come to you with the second interim report in March of 2024. So I will open it up to any questions that you may have regarding the first interim report.
Questions? Tracy Philbeck.
Mr. Chavaria, we both attended the overview at CSBA at the conference for what's expected, you know, in the I think you'd agree, there was a real heaviness in the room. It was it was pretty dire. But I was trying to recall, at the state level, what was the deficit expected to be next year? Was it $26 billion or?
Yeah, they they said that for '22-'23, because we waited to collect the taxes, it was $28 billion.
$28 billion was what?
But when you combine this year as well with everything else, it equates to $68 billion.
$68 billion, and that was for the delayed, they delayed the taxes and, okay.
So the talk now is that if we hadn't delayed, we would have been short the $28 billion anyways, but things would have happened before enacting the current budget that could have balanced things out. But that's talk, I, you know, as they say, kind of like a couch quarterback saying after the fact. Kinda like a couch quarterback saying after the fact kinda thing, right? So, yeah.
Well, it's a very thorough presentation, and thank you for giving us all of the, you know, information, good, bad, and whatever, you know, we need to hear it. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Um, no, it's not easy being the bearer of bad news in these types of situations. But thank you and your team for uh being here and all your tireless efforts on that. I just wanna commend you and thank you for looking not only across the district uh for ways to trim costs and reduce costs, but also within your own division, looking for outside-the-box areas you can do that. Uh so I appreciate your continued efforts on that. I know you've been looking at even the the state unclaimed property. Um, that's kind of a rolling issue where those items come up every once in a while, and it's maybe a little nickel and dime here and there, but every little bit helps. Um, and I know we got a search, we're still getting some funds from Anaheim City. So there's these different uh, you know, names that are coming up with that as well, in addition to Anaheim Elementary. So searching for all those, so thank you for that. Um, I did also have a a question um in terms of, not to prognosticate too much. Um, but we did have some presentations recently, earlier this year, on solar panels, some other capital projects. So what impact do you think they might have for that, for some of our other programs that we have? Uh, we have a couple other spending items that are coming up here later this evening. Um, so I'm wondering what impact that might have for us, here's a district, it, just roughly, I know it's still early.
Well, in particular, the solar panel actually helps us. As you remember, the presentation that was presented to you, there's an energy uh savings in terms of our expenditures, a little bit over a million dollar each year for twenty year plus. And those panels would be basically provided by the, you know, the 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 company that we select through the RFP process, right? At no cost to the district. So the savings to us would be in the energy used at the reduced rates, which is a good thing for us, knowing that at least for every year, for the next twenty years, we'll be saving over a little, a little bit over a million dollars with that particular project.
Thank you. Uh, and we also had, about a year ago, the governor stated we have a ninety seven billion dollar surplus. So it went from the surplus to of ninety seven billion to now sixty eight billion deficit. So uh that was just an overestimate, an overly optimistic estimate of the taxes being paid primarily.
Well, the 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 thing is, uh the the talk this morning from capital advisors uh in our CBO meeting was that what's happening is we're very dependent on the highest tax earners, as they say, right? And they're actually leaving the state. So we have lost about fifteen to twenty percent of that revenue, that income, right? And so there is talk about changing the tax structure in California so that we're not so dependent on only a one percent in the whole state, right? Not necessarily meaning that everybody has to pay more, but just changing the structure so that we don't deal with these types of situations every so often, right? Like you said, we went from surplus when the economy was, you know, robust, to now we're looking at something different because it impacts those individuals. And I think the high interest costs, right, interest being so high, it has led a lot of our smaller company innovators and things like that to not do some business because they can't afford maybe to go out on a limb and and start up a new company or so on.
Thank you. Uh, and you also mentioned for future considerations, textbook adoption, special education. Um, do you have any recommendations on what we might do regarding those? Because we need to apparent, uh, there's something I brought up at the last meeting, was it is a costly expenditure for us that we have to do periodically. Um, and interestingly enough, uh Ms. Ms. Philbeck, you might be interested in this. I uh did have a chance at the CSBA conference, I talked to some of the legal team that were there about options we might have. And there's a webinar, so I might share that with you as well. Um, but I think it's something worth uh continuing to examine, bless you, other options to see if, not necessarily digital, because again, that that could be something we don't wanna get addicted to. Um, but other supplementary materials that are kind of paper and old school, but um less costly.
Yeah.
That are still quality materials.
And that's something we can have a discussion with our Ed Services Department. I know they've been working, collaborated with our purchasing department in order to negotiate better deals. One of the things that we keep pushing for and we're hopeful is that some districts are able to negotiate where they can do their own printing, right? You're just basically buying the license, so you can print as much as you want in terms of if you need workbooks. So now you're not having to pay so much for each work book. But sometimes they don't wanna do that because, you know, they they kinda miss out on the business. But sometimes giving the right amount for a set license does make sense, especially since we have a our own print shop. That is one way. In terms of special ed, I know that's something that we have to kinda also look at, right? And see where maybe we're seeing those increases, right? And fiscal, we're not the experts when it comes to special ed and the services we provide. But I did see a report today in our CBO uh meeting. Uh, we do have the largest contribution across the entire county. Uh, I think we contribute from general fund and other monies about seventy percent of the total cost of special ed. Whereas most districts are on average around fifty, fifty-five percent. So that is something that we do have to look at. I know that one of the things is we provide really good special ed classes and services. So I don't blame our families for wanting to move to Anaheim and take advantage of those services, right? But, you know, that's something that we're not experts at in terms of, are we doing everything we can? In terms of the, you know, the needs of our students, in terms of special, special ed. But is that is something that we do have to kinda analyze a little bit more.
Okay, and then we keep pushing that IDEA full funding, right? It's more of a long-term goal, but uh keep doing that. And I think more than anything, it's also heightened, this also highlights the urgency that we examine more of those outside-the-box um kind of initiatives that I that I mentioned before, whether it's the food services, uh take a look at that, holding some of our other vendors accountable, whether we have an audit, something that we can make sure that we're getting our our precious taxpayer dollars worth out of for the after-school programs and all that. So it's something I wanna look into and make sure that we are getting our monies worth because we can't afford. We can never really afford it, but even now, it's kind of that urgency has become a lot more palpable.
And that is something that I know Dr. Downing has kinda looked into as well. Uh, looking, return on investment, they call it, right? ROI, to see if some of the things that we're doing, you know, in terms of makes sense, or maybe, you know, it's kind of refine them and do them maybe a little bit different.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty three, twenty four first interim budget as presented at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty three board meeting. This report indicates a positive certification indicating the district will meet its financial obligations for the current year and two subsequent years. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Philbeck?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Moving on to the consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There's no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or public requests specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar. Are we all good with the consent calendar?
I need to pull two items, please. I need to pull item.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? I can't hear.
I need to pull two items. The first, eight E point one eight. And the next item, eight E point one nine.
Okay, so I have eight E point one A?
Eight.
Eight. That's the shade structure?
No, it's the YMCA, the two items that are YMCA. And I'm sorry, my um pages don't have numbers on them, so I don't know what, page twelve.
Okay, so um you're pulling these two abstain from voting, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're pulling these two abstain from voting?
Yes.
So it is recommended the Board of Education approve, ratify the con- following consent calendar items, with the exception of items eight E point one eight and eight E point one nine, which were polled and will be voted on separately. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Dr. McCullis.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five oh. Okay, let's go ahead and look at eight E point one eight. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a license agreement between this district and the Young Men's Christian Association, the YMCA Anaheim, located at two forty South Euclid Street, Anaheim, California.
I'd love to discuss the item.
Motion is by trustee Alvarez.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. McCullis. Any discussions?
I just need to state that I am on the uh executive board for the Anaheim Family YMCA, and I will be abstaining from this item.
Great, so all those in favor?
Mr. President, I was also, I would also like to uh state my abstention for this item due to receiving compensation within the last twelve months.
Okay. So with that said, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
So abstentions by trustee Philbeck and Mr. Lopez. All right, pulled item eight E point one nine. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a license agreement between this district and the Young Men's Christian Association of Anaheim, two forty South Euclid Street, Anaheim, California, nine two eight oh two.
I'd love to discuss the item.
Moved by trustee Alvarez. Seconded by trustee McCullis. Any discussion?
Same statement, I am uh disclosing that I am on the board for the Anaheim Family YMCA and will be abstaining from this item.
I'd also like to state my abstention for the aforementioned reason that I received compensation within the last twelve months from YMCA. Thank you.
Great, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain, please.
Okay, motion carries three oh. All right, and that is the end of the consent calendar. Let us move on now to the action calendar. Superintendent's office, it is recommended the Board of Education receive for first reading revisions to the following board policies and administrative regulations. Board policy oh four one zero.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Lopez. Can I get a second?
Second Alvarez.
Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty twenty three dash twenty four slash twenty nine, declaring January thirtieth, twenty twenty four as Fred T. Korematsu Day.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. McCullis.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty twenty three dash twenty four slash thirty, declaring the month of January, twenty twenty four as school board recognition.
So moved.
Enthusiastic second.
All right, uh so moved by Dr. McCullis, and enthusiastically seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, carries five oh. Moving on, educational services. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the facilities use agreement between this district and Vista Charter Public Schools.
So moved.
So moved by.
Second.
Trustee McCullis. Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Um, going on down, uh it is recommended to human resources. It is recommended the Board of Education implement the PARS supplementary retirement plan, the district early retirement incentive program, for eligible certificated, non- non-certificated, certificated management, classified non-management, classified management and confidential employees during the twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four school year. It has been determined that the required number of participants have enrolled for the district to offer this plan.
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by trustee Alvarez.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Philbeck. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries five oh. Congratulations to all of you taking advantage of this supplementary retirement plan. Yeah, lucky, all right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised salary range placement for our cybersecurity specialists. This position shall be moved to range twenty three from range seven of the classified management salary schedule effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Lopez.
Second Alvarez.
Moved by trustee Lopez, seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. All right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement between the district and Anaheim Elementary Education Association, AEEA. The major fiscal considerations of this agreement include a three point two five increase to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty three. A two percent increase to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four base salary effective January first, two two, twenty twenty four. And a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the unit members twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four base salary.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by trustee Lopez, and seconded by.
McCullis.
Dr. McCullis. Discussions? Um, I would just like to say that I think our teachers totally deserve this. They've worked so hard, we're very, very proud of all that they do for our students here. Um, and even through the whole time period of COVID, you know, they came back and they worked remotely, and they came back and worked in a hybrid, and, you know, they were troopers throughout this all. And I'm very, very proud of our our educators, and they truly deserve this, so kudos, educators. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement between the district and Anaheim Elementary Education Association, CSEA. The major fiscal considerations of the agreement include a three point two five increase to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty three. A two percent increase to the twenty twenty three, twenty four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty four. And a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the unit members twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four base salary.
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by trustee Alvarez. Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All I just wanna say is ditto to our classified employees. They work extremely hard, and we're very excited that they too are able to get this uh financial award. So congratulations to our classified members. All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement between the district and Anaheim Elementary School Management Association, ASMA. The major fiscal considerations of the agreement include a three point two five increase to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty three. A two percent increase to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty four. And a one-time off-schedule payment equal to two percent increase to the unit members twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four base salary.
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by trustee Alvarez.
Lopez.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a five point two five increase for the classifications of the provisional salary schedule effective January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. So moved by trustee Philbeck. Can I get a second?
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Great, carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a three point two five increase to the monthly rate of pay for board members of the Board of Education from four hundred and sixty eight dollars per month to four hundred and eighty four per month, per person, effective July first, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
All right.
Second Lopez.
Okay, motion made by um Dr. McCullis, seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a three point two five increase to the employees' twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary. This is for Superintendent Dr. Christopher Downing.
So moved.
Second Alvarez.
So moved by trustee McCullis, seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Downing.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great.
Thank you. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision C three, the Board provides this oral summary of a salary increase for Superintendent Dr. Christopher Downing. Pursuant to the contract approved by the Board at its regular meeting on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the following salary increase raises the employee's annual salary to three thirty-one, four seventy-two, a three point two five percent increase to the employee's twenty-two, twenty-three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employee's twenty-three, twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employee's twenty-three, twenty-four base salary. All other employment contract terms remain the same.
Great. Thank you. Moving on. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a three point two five increase to the employees' twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary.
So moved.
And this is going to be for our Assistant Soup of Administrative Services, Jesus Chavaria. And I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Lopez.
Second Alvarez.
Mark Lopez, seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Dr. Downing, please take it away.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision C three, the Board provides this oral summary of a salary increase for Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, Jesus Chavaria. Pursuant to the contract approved by the Board at its regular meeting on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the following salary increase raises the employee's annual salary to two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, a three point two five percent increase to the employee's two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three base salary effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, a two percent, pardon me, a two percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary. All other employment contract terms remain the same.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a three point two five increase to the employees' twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty-four base salary. And this is for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Mary Grace.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision C three, the Board provides this oral summary of a salary increase for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Mary Grace. Pursuant to the contract approved by the Board at its regular meeting on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the following salary increase raises the employee's annual salary to two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, a three point two five percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three base salary effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary. All other employment contract terms remain the same.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Downing. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a three point two five increase to the employees' twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employees' twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary. And this is for Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Dina Mellon.
So moved.
So moved by trustee McCullis.
Second by Philbeck.
Trustee Philbeck is a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Carries five oh. Dr. Downing.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision C three, the Board provides this oral summary of a salary increase for Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Dina Mellon. Pursuant to the contract approved by the Board at its regular meeting on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the following salary increase raises the employee's annual salary to two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, a three point two five percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three base salary effective July first, twenty twenty-three, a two percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and a one-time off-schedule payment equal to a two percent increase to the employee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four base salary. All other employment contract terms remain the same.
Great. Um, well, congratulations all of you and congratulations to all of our teachers and classified staff members and of course, our administrators out there. Um, for administrative services, there is none, and now we are here at the end of our meeting with board discussion, and we will start with trustee Philbeck.
Okay. I did attend the Anaheim Ross, the Anaheim Ducks, Reading is the Goal. It was great. I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay. Bless you, whoever sneezed. Okay. Um, at lunch, the students played street hockey, and then there was an assembly featuring two of the Ducks players. I'm sorry, I can't remember who. But they were reading to the students, and of course, Wildwing was in attendance, and he was an absolute huge hit. So he really got the crowd working. Uh, I also attended the Nutcracker of nine hundred students, various schools and grades by the Anaheim Ballet. And I would just like to say that it was a beautiful performance. I was able to attend it with Belinda Gordillo, and we really enjoyed it. Um, it just was amazing, beautiful dancing, and the kids were, were really entertained. They were just mesmerized by it. So thank you for that. It was Anaheim Ballet. It was, it was beautiful. Um, I did attend the California School Board Association Conference in San Francisco with several of my other board members, where we did receive the Golden Bell for the Spanish Dual Language Immersion Academy. And thank you to everyone who submitted for that and, you know, pushed us up there. It was, it was great. And I was honored to be on stage with Dr. Downing as we were accepting the beautiful bell. It was really a proud moment, and I think for all of us as board members and the crew that was there from the district supporting us. Um, I'll just mention that there were a lot of presentations. There were delegates from all over the state. I am a delegate for Region fifteen, so I did go two days earlier to be involved with President Trejo. Over here, we, we are both delegates for Region fifteen. We had a lot of business to take care of those, those first two days and electing new officers and getting a lot of reports and learning about legislation. And there was just a lot going on. It's a very intense couple of days. And then joined by the rest of my board members for the remaining part of the conference, which there were, there was a lot of presentations, a lot of them development. And I took part in a policy pillar meeting on improving the conditions of children, maximizing school safety, artificial intelligence, community school transformation, a very interesting public records information and Brown Act and Conflict of Interest presentation. The federal update, which Mr. Chavaria and I were in and was, was, we didn't cry, but almost, right, Jesse? And several keynote speakers. So it was an intense week, but I was really appreciative that I got to go and learn so much. Okay, um, the, at, uh, this was at Revere. I got to, I attended the children giving gifts, which if you don't know what that is, it's where all, there's a lot of donated presents, small items, and the kids go through and they get to pick things and put them in bags for, to take home to their parents or grandparents or whatever. And I saw some of my favorite people in the whole world, Bob and Ginny Gardner. Bob is still, uh, still involved in this and was able to come to this one. And there's their little bags that they go through and, and pick out the things. Jess, do you have the one of him and Ginny? Thank you. Two of my favorite people. They, they were there and the event went really well and the kids were happy. And I'm just, I'm really happy that we, we get to do that at the schools and also that the gardeners are, are still involved. Okay, um, at Sunkist, we had the, there was a Zoom meeting. There is now a, a virtual exchange with the Yanakawa Elementary School in Mito, Japan. Now, our, Mito, Japan is our sister city for the city of Anaheim. And so we had the first meeting. I believe Mr. Relus was on that. I'm not sure who else. But, you know, little fixes here and there. We got to get some of the technology going a little bit better. But the kids exchanged greetings. They told a little bit about themselves, and then they got to ask each other questions, and they also performed for each other. And so it was just, it was a good start, and it's going to get better and better. And the, and the kids from Principal Schumate told me that they absolutely loved it. They were really excited. Okay, the Marshall Winter Family Night for Anaheim succeeds. There was resources and crafts. It was basically Henry Marshall and Man. Is that correct, guys? Is that? Um, and with performances, baile folclorio and mariachi. It was excellent. It was amazing. I did participate in Classified Employee of the Year, going out and doing the surprises at all the schools. I think there was seven or so. I mean, schools and maintenance and the data department and transportation back at the district. So that was a lot of fun, and I want to congratulate each and every one of them. You make us proud. And congratulations, and, and we are very excited about those that are moving on to the possible county level. Okay, and let's see. I went on Tuesday and just got to say a greeting to a parent, the PLI, Parent Leadership Ship Group, and they were, had some heavy stuff they were discussing around, about the school day. So I just got to, I always like to go and just say hi. Uh, I attended the Gwynn Holiday Performance and Tree Lighting, and I got to say it was pretty fantastic. The, um, Blitzen's Boogie, Boogie Boogie Reindeer was my favorite song. But they also had music, the violins, a band, and well done. The tree was lighted by Councilmember Fessel. And it was, they just did a fantastic job with it. It was really, really good. So at Price, another Anaheim succeeds student performances. This was, today's Wednesday. This was yesterday. Okay. Sorry, losing track of what the days are. And there were mariachi group, a mariachi group, and then the baile folclorio, beginning and advanced group, and a big thriller for the evening was hip hop. And that was a lot of fun. That was really, really cute. The PTA brunch this morning was wonderful. And it was at St. Anthony's and a lot of fun. I, I won some baskets. And it's always great to get together with our parent volunteers and our PTAs. And especially this time of year, it was wonderful. So I want to wish everybody happy holidays and a wonderful break. Maybe we all get some much-needed rest and, and time with our families. Everybody, please stay healthy. And I'm going to do a little different. I'm going, oh, I forgot to mention at the Gwynn Holiday Performance, there was a fourth grader named Eli Reyes that was playing for the whole kind of introduction and as we were milling and everything. This, this young man is so talented, and he was fantastic. So if you indulge me for about forty-five seconds, I wanted him to play me out of my board report. And this is Eli Reyes, fourth grade at Gwynn. Thank you, Eli. And he played for about thirty minutes, played every Christmas song you can think of. I didn't see any music in front of him. The kid was just rocking it the whole time. So I was really impressed. And it also makes me very thankful that we have music in this district and that it's promoted. So thank you very much. Happy holidays to you all. And that concludes my board report. I thank you for listening.
Awesome. Trustee Alvarez.
Thank you, Board President. Excuse me. All right, so I have two events to report on. My first one is the California School Board Association Conference. I was really proud of us when we were receiving the Golden Bell. Two highlights from that evening. Dr. Downing's face when he was realizing he was in the moment of receiving a Golden Bell, right? So it was just one of those things that I think as leadership in a district, you know about, and you attend this conference all the time. But when you're there and it's for you, it's for your school, it's for your programming, and it just brings a little extra spark, right? So I was really just happy seeing Dr. Downing, happy about being a recipient of that. So that was a highlight for me. And then the other highlight was seeing the faces and reactions of, of our CNI department, who got to attend the conference to receive the award. Uh, Magali grabbing the bell and just ringing it for who knows how long. Was just so, it was so great to see. It was just enthusiasm, and I think it's just like the release of knowing that your hard work and your heart being poured out to programming is being recognized and valued. And so that was really great for me to see, right? Just being an educator myself and knowing that that was a moment of validation for so many of our staff members and knowing that the work that they're doing is impactful and is being recognized. So I just was, it was a really joyful night for me to just see the joy in others receiving the award. So I'm really proud of us for, uh, for that, for that accomplishment. Uh, I did, I did want to highlight one session that kind of stood out a little bit for me. We went to a session on community schools with Dr. Downing, and, uh, we kind of chatted a little bit after. And it was kind of a surface level, a community schools presentation. And so what I was able to do is not learn something new, but discover something that we're kind of on the forefront of and that we could kind of work on focusing. Um, so the thing that was lacking for me is the connection on how to take pedagogical skills or teaching and transform it so that it is in sync or in, in, on the same wavelength as the mission of community schools. And it's, it's not happening at all schools, and, but I, I just want to highlight the work we're doing with CREST and the culturally responsive teaching that we're putting into play, um, and our commitment to our students seeing themselves in the curriculum. I think has already put us in a position to be ready for that, right? And so I think we're going to be on the forefront of that as well. So it's just something that I think we can kind of look at as, as we develop curriculum and instruction and how to, how to take the great things we're already kind of working on, because we are working on it, right? And mold it to be like seamless as like, oh yeah, community schools, right? Um, so, um, it's kind of, for me, it's putting all the work we've been doing for like three years and just kind of like melding it together and being like, hey, I think we were developing community schools anyway, right? So it's kind of one of those things. So I, that's the insight that I got from that session that I kind of wanted to share about. Uh, and then on December seventh, I did go to the Marshall Light Up the World event with a fellow, a few of our board members. And the highlight for me, obviously, is seeing the cultural dancing and the music. But the, the one thing that really kind of touched my heart, I was talking to a community member who lives, uh, down the street, and her grandson attends the school. And I could tell she just was glowing.
on November fourteenth, which was right before the Thanksgiving break. And one of the things I appreciated Dr. Kim did was she had a gratitude circle and I think it's something we don't do often enough is really, it's easy to focus on the problem, it's easy to focus on the negative, but having everybody focus on something they were grateful for in the teacher PD, I think really kinda changed a lot of the mindset of the entire meeting. So, I just wanna thank Dr. Kim for instituting that while I was there. And then November fifteenth, I attended the Community Schools Steering Committee at Key, which I really don't have an excuse not to go to that because it's right down the street from my workplace, my work site, so I could literally be there in two minutes, so of course I had to go to that. Great turnout there, a lot of good conversation was happening. And then on November twenty-seventh, I went back to Paul Revere Elementary for a teacher meet and greet for round two, because I just couldn't get enough, and got some really good insight from a lot of the staff there who are, who work there on a daily basis and were able to provide me great feedback and just how we can help each other to help our students be more successful. So, and I appreciate Dr. Downing taking the time to, you know, consult with me and collaborate with me on some of the areas that were, areas of improvement, I think, for a lot of our staff. And then November twenty-ninth has been mentioned already, I was at the CSBA Conference for a few days. Some of the conference workshops I attended had to do a special education, of course, talking about the disproportionate representation of African-American, Hispanic, male students and just being mindful of that. I know that came up at our LCAP meeting as well last week. But I also attended a school safety workshop with President Relis. I believe Tracy Golden was there as well. Jesse, you might have been there. So, a lot of those measures, we're already, as trustee Alvarez said, we're ahead of the game at the forefront of a lot of those safety measures that were being kinda touted as important to have at our school sites. So, I think that speaks to a lot of our, you know, our staff are being onsite, making sure we have all those safety improvements. So, thank you, Mr. Chavarria, for helping with that. Of course, the highlight was the Golden Bell. And I just wanna say congratulations to Magali Rodriguez, just being the face of the DLI program. So, she's out there, I think even on our presentation for the pledge, there was another DLI parent workshop, January twenty-fourth. So, she's been at all of these parent meetings, she's, you know, coordinating all of these different events that are going on. I see her everywhere for the DLI, so I just wanna say congratulations to her and her team for making this a reality. So, it was a great time while we were there, being able to recognize our staff for all the great work that they're doing on a daily basis. And then December fifth, I attended Orange Grove for a teacher meet and greet there as well, just to visit and see what was going on at Orange Grove. I did not make it to the motorcycle parade, so I was a little bummed. I went on the wrong day, so I had it on my calendar the wrong day. So, December sixth, I already mentioned the LCAP Advisory Committee I was able to attend. And then December seventh, there might have been a birthday or something, but I was at the ELOP Lights on the World with a few of my colleagues here. Again, Marshall, Henry and Mann did a great job. We were right there in the front row and there was, at one point, there was an announcement saying we're gonna have some of the students come down to the front, so if you're in the front row, be careful. I thought, am I gonna have to sign a waiver? Because they're just kinda spinning around and everything, so it got a little dicey for a second, but we made it through. And then the next day, I was able to attend an event at Sunkist. They had a Winter Wonderland Resource Fair, a lot of great information. Thank you, Ms. Gordillo, for presenting some of that. We had a lot of partners there, Anaheim Public Libraries, Cal Fresh, Cal Optima, The Villages, Fire Zone Church, all had a lot of great resources, prizes for the kids, so a great time had by all there. And then I was able to attend the OCO Annual Dinner that evening. Yessenya Navarro's there, Yudira Moreno, Geraldine Garcia, so great representation by AEST at that event as well. And then yesterday, I was at Ponderosa, so I was able to visit all of the school sites within trustee area four for a teacher meet and greet there as well. Really great to just talk with fellow educators, teachers who are there every single day at their site and get their feedback. And then afterwards, I was able to go to Olive Street for their winter festival. And I may or may not have had a few pictures in the photo booth there with some of the props that you can, I didn't wanna show the photos. I didn't bring my audio visual today, so, sorry. But they're all on my trustee page, so I'll direct you there. With that being said, I would also wanna say happy belated National Special Education Day, which was on December second, and then happy Hanukkah for those who are observing that as well, which I believe ends on Friday. And other than that, have a safe, restful break, take the next three weeks off, well deserved. A few of us will still be working next week, so, but the rest of you, enjoy your time off and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Not me, I'm on break already. I'm just joking. All right. First and foremost, I wanna say a happy belated birthday to our president, trustee Relis, happy belated birthday. In fact, I think I did this for President Philbeck when she was president, it's not like they can announce, let's sing happy birthday. So, let's go ahead and sing happy birthday for our president, trustee Relis. Ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you, cha-cha-cha. Happy birthday to you, cha-cha-cha. Happy birthday, President Relis. Happy birthday to you. Woo! All right, I get to do that two times. I also wanna say congratulations to our amazing superintendent for your transformative leadership award. I truly believe that in the years working with you, that we have definitely transformed not just this school district, but education as a whole through your leadership and others just listening and hearing from you. Yeah, can we get some? And of course, with the support of your amazing cabinet. And happy holidays to everybody, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. I'm so excited for 2024. I'll be in the Philippines, I'm actually gonna be heading to the Philippines to visit my family, it's been a really long time since I've been there. But I also have something to share that, you know, and first and foremost, I will be here 2024, but, you know, after discussing with my family about my next moves, because family is everything, I've decided that next year will be my last year on the school board for Anaheim Elementary School District. I will not be running for reelection, but I promise to give it my all because I love this district, I'm from this district. A lot of my friends and their families and their kids are in this district, but a lot of them are getting older. But I'm just so excited for 2024 and that's all I have to share. Happy holidays, everybody.
Well, I don't even know how to follow that, like, I'm all like sad now. All right, so, what makes me happy? Well, the Golden Bell Awards makes me happy. It was fantastic, it was awesome, it was great, we had a great time at the CSBA Conference, those of us that were there. And like all my colleagues have said, it validates a lot of the great things that we're doing here. I don't think there was one conference that I went to where I was like, oh my gosh, like, why haven't we done that? Like, we've done parts of it, if not all of it, over a hundred and ten percent. And Tracy and I were sitting next to each other at the safety one and we're talking, I was like, how do they not have Raptor? How do they not have single point of entry? How do they not have, like, and hearing people talking about this, it was like, I don't understand what planet we're on here, you know? This is totally different than what we've been doing in our district for many years now, so I was very proud. And of course, the highlight was the Golden Bell Awards. You know, it was great to see Magali Rodriguez and her team and everybody just gets super pumped about that. We had a great time, it was fun. Another thing I'd like to go ahead and mention is the ELOP Light Up This World. It was, it was an awesome event and truly what was cool about it was, you know, everybody has those realizations like trustee Alvarez was talking about earlier about like, oh my gosh, I would never, for me personally, it was taking my mom to this event because it was my birthday. And my mom wanted to take me out to, you know, for a birthday dinner, which we did, she took me to Applebee's. And she was like so excited because they have amazing, Ryan, Miko, you don't understand the specials they have for the fall, it's so good. I was like, okay, that works out, you know? But it was funny because of the fact that one, the topic of conversation throughout the entire delicious dinner at Applebee's was about how much and how awesome it is to see our different culturally celebrations grow. And she was telling me and she reminded me of how when I was first elected to this board ten years ago, and she came, she had to come to a board meeting and we had Benito Juarez and I think Price were the only ones really that were dancing and didn't, doing the Ballet Folklorico and whatnot and they were here and it was packed and whatnot and she's like, and you, and you have this at all your schools now? Like, look at this. And then, of course, afterwards, the topic of conversation was how beautiful the dresses were and this is so great, you know, and all this stuff. So, it's really cool to see all the development and all the great things that have been taking place here and the amazing AEST this last decade, it's awesome and very just, as a board member, you leave always and you're just like, wow, I'm super proud of that and what we've done. I went over to, I was scheduled to go to the OCO Dinner as well with trustee Lopez, but one of the, and honestly, I sent this picture to my sisters and they've been sending me comments back and forth and they're like, who are you? I work at Orange U Junior High School and so, they had their big holiday performance that night and they were short one character in this holiday performance. And I'm not talking about Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer. They asked me to play Santa Claus. And so, I did and I'm convinced that this is why, oh gosh, no. And I'm convinced that, that I have no like voice because of constantly yelling the entire time, the ho, 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 welcome, you know, kinda thing. So, I'm blaming the Anaheim High School District for not having a voice anymore, okay? Then I went over, then, it was pretty fun though, I have to tell you. And then, so because of that, I was able to send my mom to go represent and she was just once again, came back, oh my gosh, I'm so happy with all the things that OCO's doing. I remember when you used to work with them and, and it's cool to just see things grow and develop and change as time goes on. I was able to attend yesterday the Gwynn Holiday Concert. I was in the morning shift, I heard the afternoon shift was great, but I heard the morning shift, they rocked it when they did the lighting of the tree, because the guy knew how to use the wand, that guy, this guy. And it was awesome and all the confetti and everything flew out, et cetera. And that young man playing the keyboard, the Feliz Navidad, like, I mean, he was playing everything and it was just amazing. It was, it was very exciting to see. And then this morning, I had meetings in the morning, but I was over in the neck of the woods, so I was able to swing by for the last hour of our PTA breakfast over at St. Anthony Cloret. It was great to see so many of our families there, everybody was in a great mood and the food, of course, always excellent. And with that, I just wanna say thank you all for the birthday wishes, thank you all for, you know, this recognition, thank you all for these cookies, most importantly. But honestly, I just wanna say thank you. I am one of these, every year around the birthday times, it always comes through about this end of the year reflections and end of the year, where am I with my life kinda thing? And I just wanna say that I couldn't be happier where I am right now in my life and a large part of that is because of the fact that I get to be on this amazing board here in the amazing Anaheim Elementary School District. So, thank you all for picking me tonight to be president, I'm very thankful for that. And thank you to all of our teachers and classified and administrators, our cabinet, everybody, and I just wanna wish all of you happy holidays. Relax, rejuvenate and stay healthy. And that concludes my report. Any future agenda items?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to hear an update about Palm Lane Charter. It's been a while, you know, and when it's a while, I get worried, you know, in the end, even though I'm anti-charter, I'm still worried about the kids in our community. So, please, Palm Lane, give us an update.
All right. Trustee Lopez.
Just a brief presentation following up on our discussion on the fiscal. Just wanna check and see how our vendors have been performing, just a, just a brief overview, doesn't have to be very long, very, very comprehensive, but just, just what that mechanism is that we're keeping that compliance accountability for our vendors as we're moving forward. I know it's, there's a, there's a cost involved with that, but in this day and age, you can't afford not to have that in place, so I just wanna see that we're keeping that transparency and accountability with our vendors, so.
Sweet. And when you say brief, I assume five slides, great, next? Nope. All right, everyone, I adjourn the meeting at nine oh five. Have a great night.
Have a great holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Have a great time with fam.